Welcome to the 21st City Council Meeting. We're gonna go ahead and get started. The Mayor is absent and excused today, and in his absence, I will be chairing the meeting today. So, we're gonna go ahead with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand and join us. There are flags on both ends. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, if you would please take your roll call.
Atchison.
Absent and excused.
Byrd.
Here.
DeCambre.
Here.
Demott.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Seitz.
Absent and excused.
Scully.
Here.
Okay, we have two proclamations this evening. Counselor Scully, if you could please do us the honor.
I take that back.
We're gonna go ahead and take a motion for the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the meeting of May 14, 2018, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is gonna be a roll call. Or boys vote. All those in favor, please say hi.
Aye.
Okay, so now we are gonna move forward with the presentations. Ms. Scully.
Alright, I am very privileged tonight to be joined by Alexa Pretty tonight to help me with this proclamation and to present it to her, and thank you Mayor Proton.
Alright, so we're gonna do, we're gonna kind of piggyback a little bit on some of the information about this proclamation. So, tonight's proclamation is for the voter turnout, Westminster Votes Month, sorry. And, so in 2014, we had the lowest overall turnout for voter, voters and voter registration since 1978. And, so the City Council decided that we should do movement to increase voter registration and voters in our city, and they declared May our voter, our voter month. And, so I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about that. It was a little bit before my time, but I gotta tell you, I'm very proud of it, because voting is one of my big issues. I really believe that everybody should get out and vote, so, and be a part of it. So, tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, so Westminster Votes Month was created in May 2016 to encourage civic engagement through voter registration and participation in the city of Westminster. As Counselor Scully said, there was outcry nationwide of this sense of nobody's going out to vote, and so how can we do that? And, so it was great that Council said, what can we do here locally? And, part of the campaign is really encouraging three steps. The first one is getting new voters to register to vote, to encourage folks that have already registered to check their status. Oftentimes, people move, or things change, and they don't realize that they're not registered until it's a little too late in the game. And, the next part is just committing to vote. So, it's taking those three steps to be an engaged voter. You'll notice on the city's social media throughout the month of May, that there's different posts with information about how to get involved, be an engaged voter, going to govotecolorado.com, or visiting the Westy Votes webpage, citywestminster.us/vote. Also, every one of you who is a Westminster resident will get a letter in the mail that goes over these points and encourages you to be an engaged voter in our city. So, that's a little bit about Westminster Votes Month, but as you said, this was created by City Council, and so it's folks here that were really behind getting this started, so...
And, when you say new voter, we're talking about new US citizens who have the opportunity to vote, and then also our high school students who are about to be eligible to vote and getting them registered as soon as possible, so that they engage in that. We all know that when we're young, we're kind of more excited about it, and then as we get older, we start to feel like the system works, and maybe I don't need to vote. But, what we've learned in recent years is every vote counts, no matter what.
Exactly.
So, very important that everyone gets out and votes. And, I would encourage everyone to reach out to at least five people tonight, and encourage them to check their status, make sure they're registered to vote, and encourage them to reach out to five more people to also do that, so that we're all voting and we're all having a say in our wonderful government and our wonderful United States here. Alright, so I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the 2014 overall voter turnout was the lowest ever measured since the US Census Bureau started collecting voter data in 1978. And, whereas when members of the community are involved in civic activities, they are empowered to address community needs and important community issues. And, whereas our community is stronger when all citizens have a voice in their government and the people who represent them. And, whereas the Westminster City Council recognizes the importance of a vibrant, inclusive, and engaged community represented by diverse cultural, business, nonprofit, and geographic participation. And, whereas the promotion of voter registration and voter participation is a high priority of City Council. And, whereas the Westminster City Council initiative, Westminster Votes, will help promote civic engagement through voter registration and participation in the city of Westminster. Now, therefore, I Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the Westminster City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2018 to be Westminster Votes Month in the city of Westminster, and encourage people to register to vote, vote in elections, and be active civic members of our community. Signed this 21st day of May 2018, Herb Atchison, Mayor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Byrd.
So, can I have members of the Westminster Historical Society join me up front, please? So, come back here.
Are you ready for speaking role?
By all means. Great. They'll all be wanting to already in college.
Awesome.
How long do you have, Ellen?
As long as you want, yes.
You don't mean that.
Wonderful. Welcome all to council tonight. This is great. Thank you for being here. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Mr. Seymour, good to meet you.
Thank you.
You're moved there in the lot of state.
Okay, Linda, get back in the middle now.
So, that's a good place for...
I'll stay here.
Alright, let me grab the proclamation, so we just get ourselves all together here. So, we are going to honor the Bowles House this evening, and I think before we get started, I would love to have Linda Grabiel introduce our esteemed guests, and please give us some background about the honor that we're giving tonight and the Bowles House.
Well, thank you very much. Our most honored guests, of course, are City Hall and our City Councilors, and we thank you. We thank you for the opportunity. Well, the Bowles House was first occupied by the Bowles in 1871, and so it's one of our oldest houses. It's a pioneer house here in Westminster, down on 72nd and Newton. And, then eventually, there were no more people to live in it, and the city bought the property, and they thought it would be a wonderful event to use this historic house as a practice burn facility. Well, children do have power, so third graders from Vista Grande Elementary School said, "Hey, hey, hey, no, 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 you're not burning down that building. That has a story behind it." And, they petitioned and got the city behind them, got news media, and the house was saved, and the city occupied the bottom floor of that for city offices, and the Bowles Society, the Westminster Historical Society, which had begun in 1962, occupied some space upstairs. But, eventually, we got the whole thing in 1988, and we've been leasing it from the city ever since. We do have a very honored guest tonight, and I want to introduce Adam Jacobson. You may recognize that name because his grandfather is the one that had started the original city charter, and they have a copy of it there, so, very historic. So, let me introduce some of these people. This is, this is a person I've known for 48 years, and we're related. It's Mr. Grabiel, Bob Grabiel, and Adam Jacobson, and Rich Seymour, and Kathy Pascoe, and Shannon Byrd, and Ilumay Imrah, who is an honorary board member, and she has known nine decades or more, and so we're very honored to have her. Our former mayor Nancy McNally, Gary Shea, and Mark Clark, and these represent some of the members of our board. So, that gives you a brief overview. Did I keep it short?
You did, and you know, so I want to just make a note here. Tonight, we're honoring the Bowles House, but I think I would also like to honor this group of people. You know, so much of our history is maintained and recorded, and the stories are told because of people such as yourselves, taking the time to invest, do the research, and make sure that our history never just gets tucked away into the dustbins of history, so to speak. You keep it alive for us in so many ways, and honestly, our community owes you all a debt of gratitude. So, for those of us who are here, please, let's give them a round of applause.
So, I learn from some of you, too, that since I'm a teacher, we usually have participation by audience members. So, I want all the members of council and staff that are members of the Westminster Historical Society, including audience members, anybody that's been to the Bowles House, to please stand. Humor me. Okay, now I'll be quiet.
No, that's one. Okay, so, that's the best part. So, the proclamation. So, whereas the Bowles House was built by Edward and Mahala Bowles in 1871 at the present address of 3924 West 72nd Avenue, and whereas the Bowles House was acquired by the city of Westminster in 1979. And, whereas students from Vista Grande Elementary School and local citizens rescued the building from being used as a practice fire burn in 1983. And, whereas the Bowles House was organized as a museum in May of 1988. And, whereas the Bowles House was designated as an historic landmark on the National Register of Historic Places on November 3, 1988, and given local landmark designation and protection under the city's Historic Landmark Ordinance in 2012. And, whereas the Bowles House is dedicated as a museum that exemplifies one of our earliest settlers and continues to be, to be open to the community for tours, education, and special events within the Westminster, historical Westminster Arts District, the school district, and the city of Westminster as a whole. Now, therefore, I Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim the 30th anniversary of the Bowles House Museum, and call upon the people of Westminster to join in recognizing this momentous occasion in our community. Signed this 21st day of May 2018. Congratulations. Yes, that's wonderful. All of you hope that we see that. So, now, get some pictures.
And, I've got my camera, too.
Okay. Do you want me to take it with you?
Yes, please. Let me get out the... Try to go. Shift back.
Like ours.
Yeah, it's... Okay, you guys act friendly.
Squish. A little squishier.
Squishier, squishier.
Perfect. Okay, one, two, three, smile. One, two, three, smile. There we go. And, now, hold on.
I'm pretty squishy.
Smiling.
She's our local paparazzi. Just get used to it.
Okay, one, two, three, smile. One, two, three, smile. Perfect.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Great to see you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you very much. So, good to meet you. Thank you again. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Good to see you. Good to see you. Alright, Mark. Good to see you. Right. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Byrd. Now, we will move to citizen communication. This time is reserved for comments on any issue or items pertaining to city business except those for which a formal public hearing is scheduled under Section 10. Today, we do have a public hearing, so if you're here for that, please reserve your comments for that section of the agenda. I have received this signing sheet from our city clerk, and no one has signed up. Is there anyone at this time that wishes to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move to report of city officials. Mr. Tripp.
Mayor Protim, DeCambre, thank you. Just a couple of things quickly. I want to remind folks that this is National Public Works Week, and to thank your local Public Works and Utilities official, and there are a few of them in the back of the room, and I'm sure that'll shake your hands afterwards if you, if you'd like to do that. But, in all seriousness, this is a big week for us. We have a number of events and activities to commemorate this annually, and we're very, very proud of the job that they do to provide clean drinking water and to take care of the safety and sustainability of our community through so many efforts to keep our roads and streets safe, to plow the snow and all the great work they do. Thank you, folks. Speaking of great work, there's about 45 people that run the various departments and divisions of the city, in public safety, and, and public works, and parks and recreation, libraries, and all of our support divisions, and finance, and human resources, and general services, and all of the various groups, community and economic development. And, 43 of the 45 of us will be getting together this, this Wednesday to talk about long-term planning for the city and to do some team building. And, so, we won't be quite as accessible as we normally are. If you want to get ahold of any of us, we're gonna try to get our phones shut off for the day, so we can concentrate on our activities together, but you can sure reach us through our, our responsive staff, responsible staff within each of the department areas, and I look forward to spending the day with those folks. After today's meeting, we have a WEDA meeting, and that'll be held as a study session in the conference boardroom. We have a great presentation about our downtown program that'll be very extensive, and talk about the history of the program up to this point, where we are today, and then where we hope to head as we move into the future. And, finally, this is a sad occasion for all of us that have had a chance to work with a very important part of the team. Alexa Pretty, who was up taking pictures just a second ago, is gonna be leaving our community and, and moving. We're gonna miss her greatly. She's been the City Council's Communications and Outreach Coordinator in her, in her time here with the city, and done just an extraordinary job. You know, the proof is in, is in the survey results, and the survey results, as I've shared with you before, counsel, rate you very, very high in the way of the community's appreciation and value they place on the outreach work that you do and your reputation in this community, and I think Alexa deserves at least some of the credit for getting you out in front of the public, so the publics had a chance to get to know you, and you have a chance to interact. We're gonna miss Alexa. Thank you so much for your service to the city. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Are there any other reports or comments from City Council? Counselor Byrd.
So, I'm, I'm just going to piggyback and make my own comments first about Alexa. So, I want to offer you personal thanks for everything that you've done for our city and for our council. I have to say, I've learned from you, the value and the, the different ways to engage with citizens in larger groups and one-on-one, and how we answer difficult questions when people might, might not be so happy with our city or decisions that we have made. So, our city is a better place because of your contribution. You are going to be greatly missed, so I did want to offer that to you and let the public know how much you are thought of on this council. The other part of my comments, I want to extend to our Public Works Department. So often, we, we turn on our water, we, we drive to the grocery store, we take so much for granted in our city. Our Public Works Department is responsible, literally, for the backbone of our city, and it's never to be taken for granted, the great work that they do for us every day. The fact that you can get a great glass of clean drinking water, and you don't need to buy bottled water in Westminster, and now I'm feeling guilty because I did get a La Croix before our council meeting tonight, but you don't even need to do that because our staff does such great work. So, I know you'll be seeing lots of projects you already have. I know some of these projects on our roads can be frustrating, but this is important maintenance that needs to be done, and we have a Public Works Department that is proactive. They don't wait until the last minute. They take care of problems when they see them. They might be an inconvenience now, but it's a great investment of time and resources now to, or to prevent greater cost and greater inconvenience later on in the future. So, another debt of gratitude to our Public Works Department. Thank you for all that you do, and you deserve more than just one week being honored each year.
Thank you, Counselor Byrd. Counselor Demott?
Yes, thank you. First off, I'd, I'd like to ask anybody who's served in the military to stand for us, so that we could recognize you. Thank you very much. This past Saturday, council was able to, and honored, to do the tribute memorial service at the Tribute Garden, and that was a very great thing that we got to honor men and women of, of the military who have stones put in that garden, so that we can remember them. The other thing that I would like to mention is this coming Monday is Memorial Day. That's a day where we honor those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for the liberties that we enjoy in this country. The fact that this council is up here representing you, the fact that we have a Westy Votes Month because we get a vote in this country, and that is due to the fact of the sacrifice of those who laid down their life for our liberty. So, I wanted to be sure that we don't forget that as we spend time with our family, what that day is about this coming Monday.
Thank you, Counselor Demott. Catherine Scully, sorry, Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, I echo what my fellow counselors said as well. First of all, thank you, Alexa. I, I would have been lost on this council without you. You, you are the representative to two of the committees that I serve on, and you always keep me informed and tell me how to, to address things and help me find the right places to go to ask questions. I really appreciate it. You will be greatly missed. And, to the public's works, I also wanted to give a big shout-out. I had a long conversation with a resident this afternoon about some of our cone zones and some of their concerns, and I was very pleased that I was able to point them to the cone zone area on the Westminster webpage and to kind of talk them off the ledge, and, you know, explain that how important our infrastructure is to the maintenance that we must do and the time we must spend in repairing things and making things work in our city, and it is what makes our city such a great place to live. So, thank you, because I don't think you get enough thanks, and I do appreciate your work. And, then also, I wanted to make a note that last week, we had the honor of having dinner with our county commissioners, both on the Adams County side and the Jefferson County side, and what a great privilege to work with other fellow people who serve, and talk to them about things that are of concern to us here in Westminster on both of our county sides, and ask them to pay attention, and, and they brought some concerns to us as well, and that was great to hear, too. We, we now have some things that we can work on as well, so it was a great time to come together as a group. And, then finally, what an honor to be able to go to the Westy Power Potter on Saturday over by England Park and see all the great ideas that are coming to that area, and share time with our residents, and break some bread, and, you know, it was a little cold, but it was a great turnout, and it was a great celebration, and well worth our time on Saturday. I appreciated being invited and having the opportunity to participate.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Counselor Pinter?
So, going last, I, I am really just piling on, and I concur with the comments of all of my fellow City Council members, and the loss of Alexa, and Public Works Week, and the amazing work that was done with GOCO. Go check out the beautiful plans for England Park. It complements so nicely Bowles House and everything that's going on. Beautiful, beautiful pictures. And, I'd like to wrap up with not only honoring and being grateful for what happened with our Armed Forces Tribute Garden, which is always a beautiful ceremony. There are literally doves. It's gorgeous. But, Colonel Kirschbaum did an amazing job with the speech this year. I can't quite see him. He's hiding behind Chris Lindsay, but, uh-huh, yeah. He was so gracious and inspiring in his remarks, and it, it really is fitting that it's also Public Works Week, where we get to honor how thoughtful you are in leading our teams to make sure that we have excellent city services. So, thank you. Much gratitude all around.
Thank you, Counselor Pinter. And, I think the challenge when you're, the real last one, is that everybody has said everything you wanted to say, but I do want to echo Counselor Pinter's comments. You know, I think we're so fortunate to have such a well-run Public Works Department, and I think in part of that, it's because of the leadership of Max Kirschbaum, and I want to thank you for your words on Saturday. They were very touching, and, you know, he talked, for those of you that were not there, he talked about the diversity and the different backgrounds of all the men and women that serve in the military, as he called them, the patriots, that are there fighting for our freedoms, and he also spoke about the, the commitment and sacrifice of the families as well. So, thank you so much. Your, your words were truly, truly touching. I do want to also mention that we not only honored men and women at the Tribute Garden, we honored service dogs. We actually got to name one. I think he had the most difficult name of all of them that I had to read, but it was, it was truly touching to, to see such a beautiful event. And, I have to echo all the comments around Alexa Pretty. I said this over Ema, I wish I had some sort of power to not allow you to leave, but we live in a democratic government, and because of that, which is a very good thing, you get to leave. So, it lost for us. It's truly a win for Green Bay, Wisconsin. For those of you that don't know much about this, but when council added this position, we added it because we really wanted to change the way that we connected with our citizens. You know, we wanted to change the kind of more traditional format, but really get creative and find different ways, so it was not so much you come to us, but how can we come to you? And, you really helped us think differently, you pushed the boundaries, and we've seen it in the council, in, in the citizen, in the evaluations at every community forum, and in the citizens that, that new method is, is working. We, of course, can always do better, but, but it's been proved, and it's been because of you. You have, we got very fortunate with you. You have so many skills and, and knowledge of different things that you helped us be better. Because of you, I think we're a more inclusive council. We are more, we've found different ways to better communicate with our residents, and those are some really big shoes to fill, and I can only wish that the person that Mr. Tripp hires next can be as good as you are. So, thank you, thank you for everything you have done for us, and gladly, your parents still live here, so we'll see you sometime soon. Okay, without further, are there any other comments from council? Okay, so we're gonna move to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. No members of council requested to remove any items. Do I have a motion? Counselor Demott?
Yes, I move that the City Council, whoa, where am I at? Move that the City Council adopts Consent Agenda 8A through 8E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Pinter, I have a motion and a second. This will be a vote with your button. community forum and in the citizens that that new method is working. We, of course, can always do better, but it's been proved. And it's been because of you. You have, we got very fortunate with you. You have so many skills and knowledge of different things that you helped us be better. Because of you, I think we're a more inclusive council. We are more, we've found different ways to better communicate with our residents. And those are some really big shoes to fill, and I can only wish that the person that Mr. Tripp hires next can be as good as you are. So, thank you. Thank you for everything you have done for us. And gladly, your parents still live here, so we'll see you sometime soon. Okay, without further, are there any other comments from council? Okay, so we're gonna move to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. No members of council requested to remove any items. Do I have a motion? Counselor Demott?
Yes, I move that the city council, whoa, where am I at? Move that the city council adopts Consent Agenda 8A through 8E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Pinter, I have a motion and a second. This will be a vote with your button. Okay, we have five yes. We have two absent and no votes, and zero no votes. Now, we will move to the public hearing and other new business. The first item is Item 10A, the first reading of Counselors' Bill Number 22. Do I have a motion? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass the Counselors' Bill Number 22 on first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds to the 2018 budget of the general investigation recoveries, general capital improvement, and community development block grant funds.
Do I have a second, Counselor Bird?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or discussion from council? This is gonna be a roll call.
Bird?
Yes.
DeCambre?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Okay, now, we're gonna move on to Item 10B. This is... Oh, sorry. Do we need to... Yeah, no, I think we're Item 10B. So, we're now moving on to Item 10B. This is a public hearing. If you're here to speak in favor or against, please make sure to sign in the sheet that's in the back to be able to enter it in the record. We will first have a short presentation by Mr. Casa from our Planning Division, followed by an opportunity from the applicant to speak. Once they have spoken, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Casa? So, I think, I think we're gonna take a couple minutes while we get this organized. And so, if, we'll come back in a couple minutes. So, we're gonna go back in session. So, Mr. Casa, is, are you ready? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Tonight, you'll be hearing a presentation on a PDP amendment for the Westbrook Planned Unit Development Track C. I'd like to make an entry into the public record, the agenda memo and all of the attachments, and the notice, which was published in the Westminster window on May 10, 2018. The property was posted on two sides on May 10, 2018. And the neighborhood certification of mailing, which was completed on May 4, 2018. The notice was mailed to 17 neighbors within 300 feet of the applicant's The property is located as vacant land at the southeast corner of 100th Avenue and Dover Street. It is within the Westbrook Planned Unit Development. In this Google Earth image, you can see the vacant property located along the railroad tracks and adjacent to the colonnade at Stanley Lake Shopping Center. Here's an image of the property facing east from Dover Street, and an image of the property facing south from 100th Avenue, and another image facing northwest from the back corner of the property. The Conference of Plan Designation for the property is Service Commercial. The zoning for the property is Planned Unit Development. The applicant is requesting to amend the preliminary development plan to change the allowed land uses. The current land uses are general office, medical dental office, office showroom, and support commercial. The proposed uses are general office, medical dental office, wholesale, retail stores, eating establishments, convenience store, auto-related sales, auto-body repair and paint and service, bank and nurseries. On April 24, 2017, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the proposed PDP amendment. The City Code provides 10 criteria to consider when approving or denying a PDP amendment. The proposed PDP amendment will add a new land use, which requires a legislative approval by the city council. Staff has analyzed the development against all 10 standards for approval of an amendment to a preliminary development plan. Staff believes that the proposed amendment meets all 10 standards for approval. The developer held a neighborhood meeting at the Stanley Lake Library on February 20, 2018. The developer introduced their project, discussed the operator of the auto-body repair and body shop. City staff attended to answer any questions, clarify any statements. The attendants at the meetings had several concerns and comments and questions. One was over concern of air pollution. Another was a question about the rezoning. Another was supportive of the development. Another was concerned over the blind curve on 100th Avenue in Dover. And then, a last was curious about the height of the building. A response to the inquiries was sent out by the city on March 1, 2018, from the city. The response is included in Attachment 9. No further contact has been made by any of the attendees of the meeting. There have been no public comments received as of 6:00 PM on May 21 for this public hearing. The proposed PDP amendment meets all of the criteria for approval. Staff is recommending that the PDP amendment be approved as it is in compliance with the Conference of Plan Designation of Service Commercial. Staff believes that it meets the city council goals of ease of mobility and dynamic and diverse economy. A recommendation is to hold a public hearing and approve a third amendment to the preliminary development plan for Westbrook Planned Unit Development Track C to change the permitted use from Track 3 from office to include service commercial uses. The applicant would like to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Are there any questions from council to Mr. Casa before we move it to the presentation from the applicant? No? Okay. The applicant, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Mike Minor. I represent the developer, owner of the project. And I think everything was handled as far as the presentation that you just saw. I am here to just basically answer any questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council to the applicant?
Thank you.
Counselor Bird?
Great. So, I'll just address this to either the applicant or to staff. I'm not sure who would be best situated to handle this. So, first, I'm very happy that you'd like to do business in our city. And I've just had some questions about the nature of your work. I know that you are one of the larger auto-body and paint, auto-paint businesses in the country. And something that I think would be important for our citizens to know as you apply to do business and to change zoning is what is your environmental record with respect to all of the other locations where you do business?
I don't work for Caliber Collision directly. I work for a developer locally, but I am familiar with their business. I can tell you that they have a very good environmental record. They actually also use a third-party environmental consultant for keeping up records and keeping up with local and national standards.
Hmm, okay. So, if there were to be an issue, if this did come up, and maybe this is more for city staff, how would the city handle that? I see from our agenda memorandum that most of this is governed by the state, but what would be, does the city, what would be our ability to assist our citizens if there were any problems?
Thank you, councilor. I'd like to bring up the City Code Title 1146J. 1146J of the Westminster Municipal Code has environmental requirements, specifically stating dust, fumes, odor, smoke, vapor, noise, lights, and vibration shall create no adverse off-site impacts in all districts. Any use that emits odor, dust, smoke, gas, noise, radiation, vibration, danger of explosion, or similar effects must do so in conformance with State of Colorado Health Department standards and Environmental Protection Agency standards. As mentioned in the memo, the city does not have its own specific environmental regulations. In order, we don't have any that specifically say you cannot emit this amount of X pollutant into the atmosphere at this amount of time, at this amount of quantity. We rely on the EPA and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to provide those regulations and standards. Now, we do have a general broadness in our code that does have this, no adverse, no adverse off-site impacts shall be created. And I believe that the city could use that to enforce against them if we were under the determination that they were breaking the law in any sort of standard. In the past, not that I have awareness that we have done this on an auto-body shop, there was a pickle producer who was pickling with chili peppers, and the chili peppers were fuming out other tenants inside of an industrial park. The city actually did go against, go after the chili pepper producer and pickler to shut them down and ask them to cease business. So, it is possible, I believe, that we could assist and go beyond and above the CD-PHE and EPA. However, to say that we would, I am not aware of that we would, councilor.
Okay, great. Mr. Frankel, in, thank you for bringing up this code section. And so, I was gonna ask a question of Mr. Frankel. So, there's a sentence here in our code, Paragraph J, that says that they shall not create undue noise, odor, any business, undue noise, odor, dust, smoke, vibration, et cetera. The undue standard, is that set by the city or is that CD-PHE in your opinion?
My expectation would be that the CD-PHE would take the lead in enforcement actions, but that the city could certainly follow suit, and we could seek enforcement of our code against the business if it were not compliant with the CD-PHE enforcement steps.
Right, okay. And then, one other question I had for our staff. How close is the nearest residential development?
Yeah, thank you, councilor. The closest residential development is the housing to the east across the railroad tracks. The houses itself are approximately 200, 250 feet from the property line of this property. That will be similar to the Abra Auto Body, which is an existing auto-body collision and repair business located south of 92nd on Pierce Street. There is an apartment complex just due west of that Abra Auto Body Repair, which is approximately 200, 250 feet.
Have we had any problems with that proximity with those citizens?
I'm not aware, councilor, of any problems.
That's all I have, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? I also had a question, I don't know if it's for Mr. Minor, Mr. Casa, but to follow up on Counselor Bird's question on the environmental record of the company, do you know of any sanctions, either by state or federal entities, that have been taken against the business for any environmental problems or?
No, I'm not aware of any sanctions. And they have pretty stringent standards on if a spill does occur and how to get people out of the area and get the spill cleaned up. The chemicals that they do have are pretty limited in nature. You know, it's probably less than you would see at a, at a normal auto, auto, auto shop where they change oil. You're actually gonna have less chemicals here. And all of their containers are 55 gallons or less. So, you're, you're not gonna see any large quantity spills.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. So, are there any other questions from council before I open the hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak? We don't have anyone that's registered right now. Is there anyone that didn't register that wishes to speak? No? Okay, it seems like no one present wishes to speak. This public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion? Counselor Demott?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the third amendment to the preliminary development plan for Westbrook Plan Unit Development Track C to change the permitted use for Track 3 from office to include service commercial uses. This recommendation is based on the finding that the amendment meets the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-14 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second, Counselor Bird?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Now, this will be a vote by the bottom of your line. We have five yeses, zero abstain, and zero no's. Okay, so now, let's move on to Item 10C. Do I have a motion? Counselor Bird?
Yes, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Daniel Minter LLC for work related to the Westminster Station Regeneration Purchase and Sale Agreement on an as-needed basis for transactional real estate matters in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from council?